Yes, I'd like to just, with the board's indulgence, I could change the dates if I may.
Of course.
We would make our submission by September 9th. And we would ask for a hearing on September 23rd.
Fine.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Item number 37, 265-13BZ, 118-2747, Farmers Boulevard, Queens.
Hi, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday and we heard your board's comments and questions relating to modes of transportation and parking. Mr. Hiram Rothkrug is here and I'd rather have him just make the presentation clearly to your board if it's acceptable with you. And he can address for you how people are anticipated to be traveling to and from the site. He can express to you the nearest mass transit locations. And also, I believe you had a question about the percentage of car ownership. So he could address all that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Hiram Rothkrug. The first comment is the census tract, the reverse journey to work. That's not a number that we made up. That's from the census data from the people who live in this particular neighborhood. And as their primary, they, on the census form, they list their primary source of travel to and from work. And in this particular area, 31 percent, their primary source of travel is by subway. And the way that happens, or for me this morning, for instance, I live on Long Island. I got in my car, I drove to the train station, I took the Long Island Railroad, and I took a subway down here to the board. Conversely, people who live, who will be living at this area on Farmers Boulevard, they would get on the Q3 bus line, which travels both north and south. And the Q3 connects with the Locust Manor, Long Island Railroad Station. They could walk just less than a quarter of a mile to the St. Albans Long Island Railroad Station. They could take the Q3 to the Hollis Long Island Railroad Station. And they could also take the Q3 to the 179th Street Station, which is the F-line of the subway. Additionally, they could take the Q3 bus to Jamaica Avenue, which connects with, connects with, I think, the E and, the E train and one of the other subway lines. So, people living in this area as their primary source of, work in the city, for instance, their primary travel mode into the city would be by subway. Even though they would also have to take the bus. But they wouldn't list that as their primary source of travel. They would list it as the subway. So, you know, in terms of 30 percent, it's every three out of 10 people living in this neighborhood would take, would take, you know, a combination of travel modes. And the subway being, that's where the 31 percent comes in. And again, that's not a number we're just coming up with or calculating. It's a number given by the census data that was released in 2010 for this particular neighborhood.
So that census tract is the immediate area, or does it include areas such as Jamaica?
No, no, no. It's just, it's this immediate, this immediate neighborhood.
Okay.
Now, you know, as far as car ownership data, this is going to be an affordable housing project. So, and there are a whole bunch of apartment units where people are earning, you know, a certain percentage of the mean income. So, if we even calculated car ownership, that everyone living in this particular development, 67 units, that everyone would own a car, we still have 23 on-street parking spaces. And at any given time in the surrounding neighborhood, there are, there's a minimum of 70 available on-street parking spaces. And that's considering 100 percent car ownership. What we looked at is, we looked at 60 percent car ownership for the development based on, based on the affordable units. That's also a number that was derived from our applicant, who have other affordable housing projects throughout the city with parking lots. And it's based on information given to us about the utilization of those particular parking lots.
So this, that information was specifically derived by an operator, an actual operator of a facility, as opposed to sort of an empirical number that was derived by a study of some kind, or by the government?
Yes, but we can, we can have the architects speak to some of that information, where it was derived from. I will say this, is that we looked at it the other way, too. We looked at it conservatively, that even if everybody owned a car, we would still, based on the spaces, the accessory spaces be provided, and the on-street availability parking, we'd be able to accommodate all the trips that would be generated to the, to the site.
And you've outlined that information specifically?
I did not, I did not outline that information, but...
So you will?
Well, yes. I'm happy to do that. I just, after hearing the comments from executive session, whatever, I just wanted to look at everything, you know, 20 different ways for the board.
And what is the car ownership in this area?
Well, the car ownership, according to the census data, is 1.1.
Oh, 1.1?
1.1. Now, you know, it's an average. In other words, some people don't own cars, other people might own four cars. So it's all, it's all combined into a particular average in this particular census data.
With us here today is Darrell Hawes, who's a partner within the project. And they have other similar facilities, or similar facility in Westchester, which is where Mr. Rothkrug came up with this statement that he gave to you a moment ago about the operator of the other facility with the car ownership rates. And Mr. Hawes is here today. He'd be happy to speak if your board would like any more information on that, that other location.
That would be fine.
My name is Darrell Hawes. I'm a partner in the development. We have a project in Mount Vernon, which has very similar economic and cultural demographics to St. Albans. And our experience has been that, well, first, New York City HPD requires for affordable housing that we set aside 20 percent of the units at 30 percent or below of median income. In this case, it would be 14 units. Our experience has been, at that level, there are no car ownership. And just to give you an idea of what that means, for a household, 30 percent of median income for a one-person household, New York City is $17,250. For two fam, for two people, it's $20,150. For three, it's $22,650. And for four families, it's $25,160. Our experience has been that typically, at the 30 percent level, there's no car ownership. As the, as the income rises, the car ownership increases. Our, in Mount Vernon, our spaces are 50 percent utilized. And we have less than 30 percent, less than 30, 20 percent of the units for affordable at 30 percent of median income. And that's how we derived our number. We feel that with the 20, 23 on-site parking spaces and the 70 available spaces off-site, that it's more than adequate to accommodate this project.
Perhaps you could supplement the record with those statistics?
We can.
So that we can understand where they came from?
We can. We could also include Mr. Rothkrug's in his report. We can include it in there as well.
Absolutely. Do you have any other issues? Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers?
Just, I'd just like to say, I have the report well done, the numbers on the report. I finished it last night. I'm just not able to submit it today. So it'll be submitted, you know, tomorrow to the board, showing the conservative 100 percent car ownership for the site and how it works with parking.
Speakers? You'll be given three minutes. Would you state your name for the record?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Isa Abdur Rahman, Executive Director, Farmers Boulevard Community Development Corporation, not-for-profit organization in St. Albans, whose mission is basically Main Street revitalization along Farmers Boulevard, as well as neighborhood revitalization. So that's why we're called a community development corporation. And I'm here today to request of the board, one, that you do delay the decision on this application, that you do keep the hearing open, and most particularly, that you ask or rather require the applicant to include in their environmental assessment statement, discussion of the impact of the project on the local schools, particularly elementary schools. From one of the, the maps that are there, within just three blocks of the proposed site are two public elementary schools. One, which is a PS, PS 36, the other, which is a charter school, Q341, the Riverton Street Charter School. And I know that most of what the board has looked at, most of what the applicant has included within their submissions thus far, have been technical things related to the parking, related to the traffic, related to the bulk, and so forth. And I know that the size of the project does not automatically trigger an assessment of the impact on community facilities, at least according to seeker guidance. But, again, our organization, as well as many others in the community that are represented here, have been represented previously, we're concerned with the community as a whole, not just with the traffic, not just with the parking, but with the community. This site falls within New York City School District 29. District 29, and I know there's mixed feelings about the Common Core curriculum, but the bottom line is that that's what the city and the state and then the federal government are basing their assessments and their resources on. Our school district has performed the poorest in all of Queens for the past two years, the most recent results having just come out last week. So I know that the board, generally speaking, is more concerned, not should say more, but largely concerned with some of the technical components of these applications. But I'm here essentially urging the board to take a more interdisciplinary view of this application. Even though seeker guidance does not say that you must, this project must look at the impact on schools, these schools are performing the poorest, the poorest. Even the PS 36, this, which is the zone school for this site, is among the poorest performing school in the district, period. And the data is there, there's a link to it, and I guess what I had submitted to Mr. Levy yesterday via email, this can't, it can't be ignored. It just can't be ignored. So our, my request is simply that, or initially, that the board require the applicant to include within its environmental assessment statement, some analysis, some discussion of what it projects the impact to be on these schools. Both in terms of the introduction of an influx of new students to the zone schools, but then also as it relates to the Riverton Street Charter School traffic flow. During construction, farmers, you know, and everybody can tell you, the farmer gets blocked up between 119th and Linden, as it is. Once construction, if construction were to begin at this site, these cars, which already kind of route through Riverton Street, which is where the school is based, will be even more compelled to do so. And there's no mention in their analysis also, of how they will mitigate that, both during construction and after the project is completed. So I feel, and the reason you're only hearing from me now, is that the board had requested a new EAS from them as of December, so I was expecting these things to be addressed, but they weren't. So I believe the application is incomplete. I believe the board cannot make its decision based on that, that the, the decision must be delayed and the hearing remain open. Thank you.
Next speaker? Are there any other speakers on this item?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Pope. I live a little over 400 feet from the subject site. I've appeared at the last hearing and spoke to you before. I'm here to address you again. First, I've lived in the community and for about 54 years. I can consider myself an expert on St. Albans. I've seen it go through all of its changes. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke before, with the overcrowding in the schools in the community, the issues of environmental impact. You'll recall, if you read the transcript, I would ask this board to require the applicant to conduct a full, comprehensive environmental impact study, because it's just glaring, the traffic on Farmers Boulevard is impossible. On Riverton Street, the neighbors fight over traffic, over parking. This facility, when it goes in, I mean, to make an argument based on income, who's going to own cars, is absurd. If you know anything about the community, income doesn't matter. Folks own cars. You've got young kids on the block, 18, 19, they own cars. The average car ownership on our block is three cars per family. This facility, we know, will be no different, and it would make the whole situation untenable. But most importantly, we've been reviewing the paperwork, the submission material submitted to this board through Mr. Levy. And we haven't seen anything that has been submitted that suggests why the protection that is on the community under the R3A zone that the City Planning Commission and the City Council granted, why that protection should be lifted, nothing. It's the same argument. What we do see is a maze of about five LLCs, all interlocking, which raises all sorts of issues of corporate governance and confusion. But most importantly, several of these LLCs, particularly the St. Albans Cycle of Life Incorporated, and the Presbyterian Church, they are not-for-profit, tax-exempt organizations. And what tax-exempt organizations are supposed to do is to build things that for-profit organizations won't do. So they have an as-of right, if affordable housing is the compelling issue, build as-of right. That's what a not-for-profit is supposed to do. They can raise money, they can bring in all sorts of volunteer work. The community would rally around the church and this other not-for-profit to help them accomplish the mission of affordable housing, only not at this location, because the location is too small and unaccommodating. There are other locations in Queens, Far Rockaway, other sections in Jamaica where the zoning is there automatically. We would work with them to find, to make that happen, so they can build their affordable housing even larger, if the zoning permits it, and it would bring the community together. That's what this is all about, rather than divide the community. As you well know, and the opposition that you've been getting, letters, a recent elected official wrote a letter withdrawing his support.
Sir, your time, your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Archie Spigner, Democratic District Leader for the 29th Assembly District, in which this project is located. The overwhelming majority of, I know that you've gotten some letters from public officials supporting this, but I will tell you that the overwhelming majority of the surrounding community, as represented by the Octagon Civic Association, the Brinkhoff Civic Association, the Ileone Area Civic Association, all of the civic and black associations are unaltably opposed to this project. There are more, there's more to a community than cars. And I don't know, like, as the previous speaker stated, I could probably say, I agree and sit down. But the number of cars is very significant, and I don't know how he conclude that the more people you put in, the less cars you're going to have. That sounds like the new math to me, but I don't understand it. You ask the people who live next door to the proposed project, who've been there for years, and who they're entitled to enjoy the light and the air and space that they now have. The light, the air, and the space that the City Planning Commission decided several years back was important to the, to the character and the people, that community, that it should be maintained by removing the 3A, 3-2, and making it a 3A. They did that for a purpose, after extensive hearing and debate. And so now, with all due respect to Reverend Davis, whose church is substantially removed from that site, he wants to waive the resident, the floor area ratio, which, the dwelling units, the maximum, the size of, and height of the building, and the proposed number of parking space, just because, he says, forget about the quality of life that, that his neighbors have, are entitled to. He just wants to put up a building. The Westchester Reform Temple versus Brown does not apply, I am told. There's no programmatic need that Reverend Davis has demonstrated, that can be provided by existing, doesn't relate specifically to the church's primary mission, which is to save souls and baptize babies. That's not, that's not this building. I sincerely and respectfully ask that, 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 if you don't know St. Albans, you should come out and see it. It's a struggling, not predominantly black, but black neighborhood. Tenuous stability. It does not need additional burdens imposed upon it that would jeopardize the quality of life and the investments that we now have. And I ask you, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Spigner. Next, next speaker?
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Bernard Harrigan. I am the President of the St. Albans Civic. I am a retired bus operator. I have lived in St. Albans community for the past 27 years. Madam Chair, this is a sham. The tossing about of deeds to disguise what these parties are assiduously attempting to do. Burst the law, which was put in place by the City Planning. This law, our community zoning law, 3A, was not put in place overnight, Madam Chair. It was carefully studied and structured to prevent the exact, this exact circumstance. The fact that this is a religious organization does not exclude them from respecting the law, adhering to the law, or grant them special privilege, especially when they cannot show proof that this is a uniqueness to this land, that there's a uniqueness to this land, or the granting of these variances will contribute to the programmatic needs of the church. Where the, where's the uniqueness? We are not against housing. We resent the hocus-pocus apartment building, which will sit in the middle of a sea of one- and two-family detached houses that are already plagued with porous infrastructure, horrendous traffic and parking condition, frequent flooding caused by the fact that we are living on top of a two-water table, only 22 feet below us. We are not against housing. We are hard-working families who deserve to be afforded the protection of the law granted by the City Planning on October 29th, 2007, to prevent our community from being plagued by unscrupulous developments such as this one. Where is the uniqueness to this, of this land? 7221, five findings. This board has had cases for religious cause before, but this must, but they must build within the law, i.e. the Coptic Christian Church in Brooklyn. Members of the board, passing deeds around is not the core of the problem. Where is the uniqueness? Thank you.
Next speaker? Do we have any more speakers?
Good afternoon. My name is Regina Eaton. I'm delivering testimony on behalf of Karen Plummer, who's the president-elect of the St. Albans Civic. I submitted testimony. Just want to say to outset that, you know, we do support affordable housing, and we actually do commend the church and the Reverend for taking this as our priority. It's important in our community. But our real concern is that this particular project is just really too big for the area that it's being proposed for. Many of the members spoke in detail about some of our position. I'm sure it happened again today. So I want to actually take a slightly different approach in this discussion, and really look at the big picture, just step back and look at the big picture. As you said, we, the designation for our community is fairly new. It's only like in the last seven years. So it's not like we're looking at some antiquated zoning rules that don't take into consideration what the current realities are. When we got the zoning designation done in 2007, there were proposals on the table for taking one- and two-family homes and turning them into two, three, four, maybe even six family units. And that was, it was under that atmosphere that we were able to get them to roll that back and say that was inappropriate for our community. So, if we were going from something which was just, you know, the maximum six families, to now putting something which is like 10 times that into the same general area, how could that be possible? How could you, after all the work that we did, how could you sort of even, you can consider that something like that could even be feasible in a space like that? So really, what we're asking you is, what is the message that you want to send? What would the decision in favor of this variance say to developers and communities throughout the, throughout the city? You know, if, if you actually allow this variance, and you're sort of saying that simply having a developer join with a not-for-profit religious institution automatically takes them out of the zoning requirements. And we don't really, you know, question the integrity of the Reverend and the church. We believe that they're, that they are meaning, they mean well. But what if you have a developer who doesn't care about the community, and just simply sees this as a vehicle by which to oversight, to get past the zoning laws? That's, that's not the message you want to send to us, or to other communities in similar situations. You know, we have fought this battle several times already, and it looks like if this kind of thing happens, we'll be fighting this battle over and over again. That's, that's really just not fair to us, and not fair to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon. My name is Leona Brown Jones. I'm listening to everybody saying, I live on 11955 Farmers Boulevard, not too far from the project. From what I'm hearing, is they just worrying about the parking spaces, the schools and everything. You can always get around that. Why this man can't build his property? That's his property. Why he got to let it sit there? Because they don't want that to be built. Okay, it's for affordable housing. I'm in the verge of being homeless. I went to go look at an apartment the other day, one-room share, kitchen and bathroom, $1,100. Where am I getting that from? I can't afford that, but maybe I could afford the affordable housing, it'd be cheaper. It's so much that this church had did for me, so far within the last two months. And it's very grateful that this is what he's thinking about doing for the community. They, to me, they're just worrying about schools and parking lots. They're not worrying about the people that's homeless, like I'm about to be. They're not worrying about the ones in the train station that need somebody to go. They're not thinking about the shelters that's being overcrowded. They taking people out the shelter, and they living on the street with their kids. How do that sound? But you say you're not against it. To me, it sound like you're against it. And I don't think it's fair. This is his property, let him do what he want to do. Everybody just come together. Why not? And they can just do it together. It don't make no sense to say, oh, well, it's too big, it's too small, with the parking lot, the schools. There's other schools around there, and there's other places they could park their cars at. Everybody don't have a car. You see what I'm saying? So that's the part I don't understand. But I would like for him to have this affordable housing project going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello. My name is Diane Hodges. I also live at 11955 Farmers. I hear the argument, like she said, based on the parking and the noise. They need to know, this is New York. You know, this is the Big Apple. This, this is noisy. So affordable houses is good for me as well, because I'm about to be homeless. And I see people, so what they saying, that it's okay, we can sleep in front of their house, or we can sleep in the streets, like, really, that is not cool, how they not trying to do that for the people that can't afford the houses. It's not right. And I think it's right that we should be able to get this housing built, for people can stop being in the streets, sleeping in the streets and stuff. But like I said, y'all talking about the parking and this, this stuff like that, I don't think that's fair. It's not fair. You know, I'd also want to say, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be homeless. And you know what? And I need this building built for the community. I don't see what they doing, all they for the community. I don't see what they doing. All they doing, letting the rats and stuff communicate, the, the stuff communicate. What is they doing? They're not cleaning that lot. It's the Reverend keep this lot clean. We the one working to clean this lot. And we trying to keep the rats down. And it's not fair. So y'all, y'all need to come together and with the Reverend and do the right thing. Thank you.
Next speaker?
I'm Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Keith Hudson, and I live in St. Albans. I also worship at Presbyterian Church in Albans. I am a member of this community, and I stand here this afternoon in support of this project. I hear statements being thrown around with regards to impact on the educational system in District 29. With or without this project, those issues need to be addressed. And I don't see how the development of affordable housing will have an impact on the educational system within District 29. Am I hearing that low-income housing will negatively impact our schools? Right now, there's talk of the schools being overcrowded. Based on Department of Education information, except for PS 26, within District 29, all of the schools, every last one, is underutilized. Why? Because of the quality of education that's being afforded. Our church has started an educational program where we tutor to our students every Saturday for free. These are the things that we're doing within our community to improve the quality of life and the standard of education within our community, because we do care, Madam Chairman. This project is important to us, and we see it as a vehicle to give sustainability and life to our community. My daughter just graduated from College of New Rochelle. I'm happy, as a parent. She came to me last week and said, Dad, I want to go back and do my masters, and I also want to begin an independent life. I want to live near home, so I'm gonna go out and look for an apartment. Last, on Saturday, she came back and said, well, it looks as though I'll be staying at home. And I need not say why. She cannot afford the rents that are being charged within that neighborhood. These issues are real, Madam Chairman. And if we're gonna provide a way to give sustainability and a life to St. Albans, we have to provide housing for our young people. Because the options that she's looking at is either staying at home or moving to New Rochelle. How do we maintain an economically viable community when our trained and qualified citizens have to move because of the cost of housing? How? These are real issues. So having said that, I know that the folks that are against this project don't speak for this entire community. I live there and I experienced this. And thank God I have a room that I can afford my daughter a space so that she can stay with us and continue to pursue her life's dreams. I really would ask you to support this project and give the necessary approval to the zoning variances that we do require in order to make this project a success. I can assure you that this pastor, this pastor means well for this community. He has been there, and I've seen it over the years, that he fought for the upliftment of this community, and this project will be no exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon. Yes, my name is Michael Nugent. I live in the surrounding areas in St. Albans. And as far as I know, I've been attending the Reverend Church quite, quite for some time now. And I see this gentleman as an education minister to uplift the entire community, right? And I can see why this particular project will be on the back, back burner for, for, for these people. So what we need to do is to have this project be built so we can have affordable housing. Because as you hear today, you hear the different surrounding of people telling you about they need, they need to have a place to live and so forth. Apart from that, I've seen where they have, the entire community, church community, is behind this project. They, they could not fit inside here today. So they allowed us to, to speak on that. And, and that's say, you can have that information too. So we need to have affordable houses. And even the great mayor of this New York City is for that purpose, right? And we need to push forward for this, for this project. We have heard of politicians being absconding to the other side, right? And these are the same politicians that come into the churches, it's particularly Presbyterian Church, for support. And to my surprise, they have been absconded. So you see the agenda, I don't know what their agenda is, apart from getting this project moving. They have an agenda to put, to have an idea for something else. We need to get this thing lifted and move on with people's lives, because the entire community is depending on this. The car parking is, 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 this is New York City, right? And we know what New York is standing for. And this is a diverse community, where we have everyone in this community is from someplace else, from the Caribbean. It's, it's a mixed community. And we have people standing on the sidewalks, guys doesn't have nothing to do. The pastor have a program to help these people. And as I said, he's a, he's an education pastor, and it is all graduates coming out, whether it's doctor, lawyers, everybody, even a commissioner, right, will be a part of this. So you need to look at this thing as, as a, at a point where we need to have a decision made on this, right? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Madam Chairman and the committee, I'm Reverend Dr. Edward Davis. I've been the pastor of the Presbyterian Church for 30 years. And under Reverend Dr. L. Charles Gray, I was the minister for youth. So I've had a great impetus to see our young people, as our brother said, to move forward educationally. But that's not the only impetus. Some 15 years ago, I was the lead pastor to have the path mark constructed in our community. And that path mark brought about a total change, total change, with jobs being voided, with food, wholesome food being made. It's been our desire only to do good for our people. That's my calling, to reach out, to help those who are in need. We are concerned about our young adults, as our brother just mentioned, who unable to live in the community in which they were raised. We're concerned about young married couples who need a decent place to live. As you heard, our sister, she has a young baby and a husband, and they are on the verge of being homeless. And then we need to look at our seniors, who've worked for years and strove hard, and now some of them are living alone, and they want to move. We have members in our church, we have members in community, we have a listing of about 75 to 80 people thus far, who's calling us continually about the need of having a place to live, and a good place. So we're there only to do good. We just want to help people. Any of the opposition you've heard, they're very, very shallow. They have no substance. We're about building, building for community, building for lives, and building for good. That's all we want to do. I helped to build 110 homes down in South Jamaica as the president of the Southeast Queens Clergy Association. I helped to bring Habitat for Humanity into Southeast Queens, and we build homes there. There's always been opposition. The path mark, there was opposition. A council person said, we don't need a path mark. Can you imagine? A council person fought against it. A council person not seeing the need for advancement for our people. Eventually, it was built with the perseverance, with the endurance, with the hard work of concerned, committed, caring people who build. Our congressmen or councilmen mentioned several organizations. I wonder what they have built. Show me the agenda of their structures that they build, things that they have done to change community. I'd like to see them. I'd like to see. They have a home, and that's it. They've done no building. They haven't improved the community. Thank you so much. I, I appreciate it.
Next speaker? Do we have any more speakers? Mr. Palatnik?
Hi, Eric. Eric Palatnik. Of course, you've just heard, you know, various viewpoints on, on the project, but I'd like to bring it back to the zoning issues, which are before the board, because everybody has their own opinion. From the process perspective, there is support. Community Board 12 heard it twice, supported it. Councilman Miller supports it. Former Councilman Leroy Comrie supported it. And Congressman Meek supports the application, as well as Borough President Melinda Katz. The application, I understand, brings up emotions within people. But the basic root of what you just heard from the people in the community, I've heard over and over again, is people need a place to live. And this will provide it. The, the question that came up about the community, the school, and the concern on the schooling, and whether that, the call for an environmental assessment, revised environmental assessment statement. First of all, the project screens out of any requirement for any environmental assessment statement to be done pertaining to school seats. There's no requirement that it be done. There wouldn't be for any other similar facility, nor should there be one for this. And not even from a secret or technical component standard, if you look at it just from a, a common sense perspective, the children that will be living here are the children that already live here. I heard from two people who live within feet of the building, who would like to live here. So this is not, Mr. Rothkrug was able to screen out the schools. And I asked him before, I said, did we able to screen out the schools for, was that for a private market development? He said, yes. Well, private market development would bring more people into a community. If I put up brand-new condos or rentals, people are gonna move from all over the place. But an affordable housing development in this neighborhood, as you're hearing from everybody, is for the people in this neighborhood. And that's who's gonna be residing there. So the, the allegations that we're gonna be disrupting the school system, it's already there. It's their children are there already. And I'm a little confused as to why they think their own children would, would, would cause a problem. But even if there were people moving in, the worst-case scenario, Mr. Rothkrug determined, and will give you this in writing, that it would attract a total of 18 students, 13 public elementary school students, and five middle school students, according to the secret technical manual, which again is for a private development. It includes people that would travel and move to an area from another area. I don't think affordable housing at this location is gonna attract people from other parts of the city. I think it's gonna be, and it's being built for the people that live here, and I think you've heard that. The only other thing that I'd, I'd like to add to, to it is that the community, the final issue is just that the community is, stands in support of it. Not only the people that are here today, but there were many other people that were here at the last hearing that spoke very well in support of the application. So even though I know there are few people against it, I think there's ample enough people that are also supportive of it. And we'd be happy to answer any other questions the board may have. We, we would ask, and I know, I know the board has had a lot of, a lot of information, that you possibly close hearings and any information that you would want, we could submit in writing. And the reason we, we make that request is because we are under funding deadlines. And we're trying hard to make these funding deadlines. And if we lose the funding, we lose the project. That's the request.
Well, Mr. Palatnik, I think if you can put together the details of what we were asking for, and make sure that you include sort of some real data about car usage, and car usage, I thought it was interesting, car usage in this particular area. I think it was, it was indicated that most people perhaps have two or three cars. Maybe you can either distinguish your numbers from those numbers in some way, and, and give us some comfort level in terms of what the car ownership might be. Understanding that we have an operator that has done some, some work in, in, because it was New Rochelle, but it's, it might be a different, you know, a different character to that project. So I think if you can get as specific as possible when you're answering us in terms of traffic and, and cars, and, you know, anything else that we're looking for, that would be very helpful.
We'd be able to do that for you, yes.
Do we have an issue with closing? We will close the hearing today.
Will we need to submit evidence?
Yes, we'll, we'll get to that. We're gonna close the hearing today, and we're going to leave the record open for some submittals. So the opposition, if you could, well, first I'll give it to, to you, Mr. Palatnik. Can you submit to us by the 16th of September?
Yes.
And if the opposition would like to put in papers based on what the, what the applicant is, is going to, to give us, so that, if you can do that by the 23rd of September, we can take a look at that and vote this out on October 7th.
Thank you.
Motion to close. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 38-283-13BZ. Alexander Levkovich is 493020 Avenue, Brooklyn.
Yes. How are you?
How are you, Honorable Members of the Board, Alex Levkovich, on behalf of 28283-13BZ, an application for a physical culture establishment. I listened to the review session yesterday. I know it was indicated this was marked for adjournment. I wanted to take an opportunity to speak in front of the board, because there was a current event, you could say, on this file that occurred yesterday in the evening. Quickly, by way of background, prior to the original hearing on June 12th, 2014, I was requested by the board to provide clarification as to the parking requirement in this issue. I submitted a letter with a proposed interpretation of the zoning resolution, where I stated in sum that according to zoning resolution 44-21, a physical culture establishment is considered a PRC, I'm sorry, according to zoning resolution index of uses, physical culture establishment is considered a PRCB. 44-21 requires parking in a PRCB in uses 6, 8, 9, and 10. In our, in our case, physical culture establishment is not any of those uses. It's a use authorized by a special permit, and thereby, and thereby, there is no parking requirement in the zoning resolution for this particular application. I was advised by the board that this is an issue that needs to go back to the Buildings Department for clarification. Now, I submitted a ZRD1 for clarification on this particular issue on June 30th. Due to the hardship my clients are facing with the time delay, I was borderline, I was, let's just say, I was very diligent in my attempts to get some kind of results from the Buildings Department on this matter. Finally, last night, around 6:45 PM, I got an email from the Buildings Commissioner's office with a determination on this issue. Now, I can somehow, I didn't get a chance to submit it to the board because of the timing of it, but if I have an opportunity now for a few minutes, I'll just summarize what, what the, the Buildings Commissioner held. He held that there is a park, that 4421 is the applicable parking requirement here. He agreed with my premise that a physical culture establishment is a PRCB parking category. He held that a physical culture establishment is a UG9, and a UG9 requires parking in this situation. Now, I would like to represent to the board that a physical culture establishment is not a UG9. And in fact, according to 73-36A1, a physical culture establishment is in fact its own use. And in the actual language of the zoning resolution in 44-21, there is a requirement for parking in uses authorized by a special permit when it's a PRC-B1 category parking, not a PRCB. Now, I think that the Buildings Commissioner made a mistake in clarifying P, uh, physical culture establishment as being a UG9, and thereby saying that there's a parking requirement. Now, I would like to relate to the board that full jurisdiction over determinations as to a physical culture establishment use and associated use in bulk is within the jurisdiction of this board. If I can direct you partly to paraphrase and partly to quote ZR 7301A, specifically as to the accessory off-street parking, it says that in such an application, the applicant shall comply with parking requirements of 44-21, except where no parking requirement is specified. 44-21 requires in PRCB categories, when there's a use of 6, 8, 9, and 10, parking is required. In our situation, it's neither of those uses. It's a use that's authorized by a special permit, which the zoning resolution itself distinguishes from 6, 8, 9 by later on in that same, in that same section stating that it's not required. And also, as a point- And also, as a point of clarification, if you look at the commercial parking requirements, it's actually reversed, the policy of the zoning resolution is reversed. In PRCB, there is a requirement for parking for uses authorized by special permit, but it's not required in PRC dash B one. I would like to request the board, now, we feel very strongly that the Commissioner made an error in that one nuance of his decision, although we do feel that determination, in fact, does support a lot of the things that we're advocating here, and the fact that a special, a special physical culture establishment is, in fact, a PRCB category, and that the only way there's a parking requirement is if a PRCB is considered a UG nine. So we are going to have to go back to the Buildings Department to deal with this issue moving forward, because we feel very strongly an error was made. However, I would like to request the board to accept our interpretation of the zoning resolution. Now, we feel that it's not even an interpretation, it's clearly in the language of the zoning resolution that I've cited that there is no parking requirement in a PRCB district in this particular, in M one dash one. To the extent that it's relevant, previously I have submitted a detailed letter explaining how this particular location is fully accessible by public transportation, it's a very busy area, near, next door, there is a twenty-four-hour, seven-days-a-week ShopRite, there's the F-Train, which is, I don't know, fifty feet away, there's two buses which are, you know, half a block away, there's a bus, buses north, buses south. Again, this has presented a tremendous hardship for my client, the delay in this process. We made every effort to go back to the Buildings Department to get the parking issue clarified. Now, even though we didn't get the affirmed stand that we were hoping for, we do feel that the Commissioner did, in a way, support some of the arguments that we made, and if we go back to him and clarify this point, how a physical culture establishment is, in fact, not a UG nine, then it shouldn't be an issue getting it finally approved from the board, from the Buildings Department. So I strongly and respectfully request this board, to the extent that it's within your authority, to please allow this case to go for decision moving forward.
I understand your position, I sympathize with your position, however, this is a threshold for us, and if the Department of Buildings has indicated that they do not agree with your position, that poses a problem. I would suggest that perhaps you write this up for us, make your case, so that we have it in the record, and can compare it with what the Department of Buildings is saying, and reconvene, and see if we can talk to the Building Department, and see if they would agree with you. So I'm not going to close the hearing today.
Okay.
I'm sorry. But I will give enough time for that sort of process to happen, for you to really write this up in a cogent way.
Just, if it's okay, if I can ask a question to the board, would you agree with the fact that a physical culture establishment is not considered a UG nine?
I am reading what the Building Department has given you, and I'm actually inclined to believe the Building Department, but I would be open for you to convince me otherwise.
Okay, and just also, as a point of reference, there was a previous matter about a year and a half ago in front of this board, one-five-three dash one-two BZ, which was a very similar matter, where there was an M one dash one zone, physical culture establishment was approved there, there was no parking requirement required there. Everything was initiated in this matter in reliance on this interpretation of the zoning resolution, which we feel strongly is very much supported by the language. So to the extent that it may be relevant, I mean, I'll include it in my paperwork, I just wanted to bring it to the attention.
Include that in your argument to us, and we'll take a look at that.
So if it's possible, if I can get the first available hearing?
Can you submit September, September ninth on this issue? And we'll bring you back September twenty-third, and we'll reach out to the Building Department in between.
And just to clarify, my submission will be focused on presenting our position based on this recent determination.
Why, you think that you're a use group nine, and
Well, we're not.
That you're not a use group nine, and that you do not fall within that category, which would require you to have parking.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item? No speakers. Thank you for your schedule.
We are going to call back, item number thirty-seven, two-sixty-five thirteen BZ, one-eighteen-twenty-seven Farmers Boulevard, Queens, Mr. Palatnik.
Hi, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to reopen? Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
I apologize, after you had closed hearings, we had realized that if you could move it up to September, one of our dates is September, so if we could move everything up one week, you had given us a September sixteenth for us to submit, if we can make that September ninth, you've given September twenty-third for the opposition to submit, if we can make that September sixteenth, and if we could move the decision date to any date in September that you have available.
I guess that would be the last date, would be September twenty-third?
That would be fantastic, if you could do that, that would help us meet our funding deadlines.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Motion to close.
Chair, Commissioner Hinkson? Commissioner Montanez?
I'm, I'm sorry, we're closing the hearing.
Are we allowed to speak on this issue?
No, we just, we just adjusted the schedule, and I think it is immensely fair.
Is the schedule that doesn't really accommodate what we would like to do in terms of submitting our opposition?
You'll have to come to the podium, so that we, you'll have to come to the podium.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, my name is Bernard Harrigan. The schedule that was set previously, we would like that to be, to stay.
You're given the same amount of time, you just needed to shift it by about a week. So you're, you're getting the same amount of time to react to his submission.
But the time that you had given us before was toward the twenty-third, you gave us the twenty-third to submit our, our opposition. We would like to maintain that time.
He's, he, we've shifted it a week, so now you're going to be coming in, I guess, on the sixteen, but he's, he's, he's giving his information a week.
But you have brought, you have brought us up a week.
Yes.
But we, there's some information that we would like to submit, that we would like to, in terms of the traffic, the traffic study, we would like to show the school opening sessions of traffic in the area.
And so you're saying, then, that, but you wouldn't be able to do that even if you, school doesn't start till September?
Schools
So you wouldn't be able to show that even if you were going to come in on the twenty-third? Or you're, I mean, I'm not sure I understand, because if
That's one of the, that's one of the situations that we're trying to do, ma'am, that we would like to submit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that, whether you're submitting on the sixteenth or the twenty-third
The twenty-third is what we
Is going to make a difference to you, because you will have the information, because school will have been in session. So it's only a matter of a week, I don't think that we have a real issue here. You'll have at least two weeks' worth of, of study to do. So I'm not sure that, that whether you get the sixteenth or the twenty-third, you're going to probably wind up with the same data.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, we apologize for the inconvenience. Thank you.
Can we close? Motion to close.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirty-nine, two-ninety-four thirteen BZ, two-twenty Lafayette Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Marvin Mitzen, the applicant.
Good afternoon.
Just like to state that, in light of our last submission, and in consideration of the concerns the board raised at the last hearing, and some of the issues that the board wanted us to address, we have modified our proposal. We will be proposing a, a change of use and construction consistent with the lesser variance that we've submitted in our last submission, with the addition of an enlarged bulkhead for the fifth floor, to be, to consist of no more than two-hundred square feet of floor area. The drawings, I thought would be ready today, it's be ready this afternoon, but we can have our complete submission in by next week, which will include a revised statement of fact and revised financials to reflect the change in the proposed plans.
Sounds good. Did the Commissioners
And we asked that we close the hearing today.
Do Commissioners have any further questions? I, I'm glad that we could come to this conclusion.
Likewise.
We'll close it, and then we'll, we'll set a schedule. Motion to close. Any speakers? Oh, I'm sorry, are there any speakers on this item? Motion to close.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
If you can submit on the second, can you do that?
We can submit next week, we have, most of the work's been done.
But the closest I can get you to vote out is going to be the sixteen.
Hmm, okay.
So why didn't you, why didn't you give us your material?
That's fine, we'll give it to you on the, on the second.
And we'll vote this out on the sixteen.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Item number forty, three-twenty-eight thirteen BZ, eight Berry Street, Brooklyn.
Now, it's, good afternoon. Berry Street, it's become a very interesting physical culture establishment application.
Yes, we do, Mr. Palatnik.
I've, we've spoken to your staff, and we've heard your board's request that we file for a legalization application for the existing facility that they're in now, and then to come back later, I think, is what I heard, to amend it, I'm not quite sure.
Well, I think, yeah, I think the idea was, is that since your client evidently is using this space
Yes, it is.
It's on the same zoning lot as what he's requesting
It is.
For the new building, that perhaps what you do is you fold in this square footage that he's using into the application that you're requesting for, the original application. We look at that and approve that as a bundle, and then when your client demolishes that portion of the building that he's operating in now, you come back and you revise your square footage numbers and anything else that needs to be revised.
We can do that.
But this would enable your client to operate legally, and I think that that's a much better situation than operating illegally.
Yes, it is, and we are one-hundred percent amenable to accommodate the board's request, and to do what the board feels is right. My only request would be, and I know that you don't have the authority necessarily to, to, to say that this can or cannot happen, but if the board could give some thought to, when we come back later, to maybe allowing the removal of that space to be done as an amendment by letter, because we are not adding any space. What that will do is save the applicant the obvious six to seven months to go through this process, as well as the costs that go along with this process, which are quite expensive, so if we can
I totally understand that, and we will, we will take that under advisement.
That would be fantastic. So we don't have, that would be the only reason that we're concerned about, is just the extra money and time. But we're, we're one-hundred percent accommodating for the idea, and we will amend our paperwork, and we'll amend our filings at Department of Buildings to include that, and we'll give you back a revised application that includes the entire space.
Beautiful. Anybody have any further questions? Any speakers on this item? How long do you need to amend your papers?
Because we have to do some filings at D O B, about four weeks, if we could submit in four weeks.
So that puts it at about, what, the twenty-third of September?
Yes, September, it seems to be very busy in September, so maybe we could submit next week, October first?
Uh, October seventh.
October seventh, submit?
No, I'm sorry, September thirtieth.
We'd be happy to submit then.
And then, do we have an issue with, with closing? Yeah, well, we'll bring you back.
Yeah, we're happy to come back.
Okay, so we'll bring you back on the, on the twenty-first of October?
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you. Just continue hearing?
Item number forty-one, five dash fourteen BZ, eighteen oh-seven East Twenty-second Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Larry J. Altman, from the Law Office of Larry J. Altman. You are seeking an adjournment? I am, yes. If we can adjourn this until September sixteenth, we would appreciate it. We have been speaking with the Department of Buildings to determine what would be acceptable regarding the seller.
Okay, so nine sixteen?
Please.
Okay. Done.
And submit two weeks prior?
Uh, yes, can you submit two weeks prior? Let's see, that would be the second, I guess, of September?
Absolutely. You got it. Thank you so much.
New cases, item number forty-two, two-two-two thirteen BZ, twenty-four seventy-two Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello, good afternoon, Eric Palatnik. I, I know your board had some questions about the application, I apologize if anything, if things weren't as clear as you would have liked, and we'd be happy right now to try to clarify any questions the board may have had, and then, of course, we'll follow up with any written submissions the board may deem necessary. I think a lot, I heard your review session comments yesterday, and I believe there was, there were questions, a lot of questions, but a primary question pertained to what use is going in at the first floor. In the space, it's approximately two-thousand square feet and change, and we show on the plans, used car sales, and it also said, car sales, and it also says rentals. And I think that's where some of the confusion stemmed from, and I apologize, that was mimicked throughout the application, and it stemmed from the plans. There hasn't been a final use or decided for that space, but the site does have an automobile rental history, and that automobile rental establishment has indicated a desire to come back, and we feel that the site is well-suited, because there are other automotive uses on the block, there's a Nissan dealership right next door, that the ground floor, quote-unquote, retail space would be well-situated for an automotive-related use due to the proximity of other automotive-related uses. So that's how we've decided upon the use, and we'll come back to you in our next submission and indicate whether it's use group, whether it's a car sales or rent, car rental establishment, and we'll make that clearer for the board. I think the board also had questions about the site plan with respect to the curb cuts that are located on East Ninth Street. The curb cuts that are on East Ninth Street are really there just in the event that any sort of truck needs to get to the building to maintain the building, or for any sort of reason they would need to get in there, that, as you can see from the plans, the entrance from Coney Island Avenue is really a tunnel entrance. It doesn't, it doesn't extend clear to the sky, you drive literally through the building to get to the rear, as part of the proposed design. So we certainly don't need both of those curb cuts in the back, but the idea of the curb cuts in the rear is that they'll be fenced off, there'll be a fence, the average everyday person will not be able to enter and exit onto East Ninth Street, rather, ownership will control that gate, and that gate will only be used in the event that a large truck, for any reason, would need to get to the building for any reason from the rear. We don't anticipate that to be the case for most things, but due to the fact that we are having this low overhang, we thought it would be prudent to have a way for equipment to get in there, should it need to be. I believe the board also, on that same note, had a question about the parking located in the residential portion of the property, and as, I know the board is familiar with, and you raised yesterday, the site was the subject of a previous variance application that allowed the automobile rental establishment to have a building on the C-eight-one-zone portion of the site, and it allowed for automobile rental establishment to occupy the entire site, in the R-five portion. We're not basing our request on the previous action, though. The basis of our request for the parking in the R-zone is simply based upon the fact that it's, the parking that's going to be there is for the proposed ambulatory diagnostic or community facility uses that are proposed within the building, and those uses are all permitted within the R-five district.
But if you're giving up the nineteen sixty-eight, you know, variance, that allowed you to then have commercial parking, you also have commercial parking in, currently, your proposing commercial parking in residential
Not, no, the commercial parking, there'll be, none of the commercial spaces are going to be within the residential district.
I think you need to take a look at your plans and make sure and make sure that that's the case.
Your 1982 CFO lists that all the parking and all uses was only... Was limited to the C-8 portion of the lot.
No, the building was limited to the C-8 portion. The actual uses are allowed on the entire lot.
Not according to the CFO. Not the way I see it.
I think you need to reconcile what, you know, what was previously granted on that site with the CO and then what you're looking for.
We'll go back. I see-
The confusion really lies.
I see the note on the CFO that you're referring to. We'll go back, and I'll confirm that, and I'll also try and give you some clarification on the residentially zone portion and what parking spaces and where the commercial spaces are located.
Right. It specifically said even the parking was limited to the C-8 zone.
Right.
Yeah, I see the note now that you're calling it out, so I'll take a look at that.
And so, that's also going to apply to access to the site? So, if you were going to have, you know, trucks or vehicles that were accessing at parking that were commercial in nature, they should not be accessing-
Through the R.
Through the R-zone.
Do you have the pre-existing plans for this site? Because the existing is... You've presented existing and proposed that are the same thing.
We don't have... We've ordered the board's case file. We don't have that yet, but once we get that, we'll be able to submit that to you, obviously, and it'll help in the analysis.
Do you have a survey or anything?
I'm sure we have a survey. I don't have one with me, but we could provide the board with the survey if that's what you're looking for.
And your papers didn't reference the prior variance at all?
Yeah, they didn't reference the prior variance because we weren't trying to re... Until we just had this discussion a moment ago, we weren't trying to rely upon the previous variance for this application. But now that I'm hearing the board's concerns and I'm seeing the potential relevancy of it, we will delve back into that, and we'll amend our paperwork to include that.
Commissioner Montanez, do you have any further?
Well, I think Commissioner Adley Brown brought it up yesterday that you're looking for a parking reduction, but you haven't given us any data to show that one is justified. The traffic or parking demand.
Well, we have submitted a parking demand study. I don't know if it made it into the board's files. There was one submitted in July-
I don't think so.
...that we submitted. I...
You don't have a parking demand study?
Heard from your testimony, from your speaking yesterday, that you did not receive it. It was submitted in mid-July. Mr. Rothkrug is here now to speak. We did do a traffic demand and parking study, and it was made at the request of the examiner during the notice of comments phase. Mr. Rothkrug is here now. He could speak to it if he'd like, but also if he'd like to wait until we resubmit and then address it all in its entirety, he would be happy to do that as well.
That's probably better of you.
We're happy to do that.
And then, your site plans show this very narrow driveway, and you don't really show if there's any queuing space for... I mean, it's like a 15-foot driveway for traffic in two directions at a drop-off location where you have to cut around the bicycle racks, and the attendant is supposed to take your car or deliver your car, and it just doesn't seem to me like it would work.
Perhaps we'll put together a circulation plan for you a little more clearly that shows you how we're intending to utilize it and how it's intending to operate, so that way we can show you how it's... What the idea is and where the cars will line up as they're queuing for the attendants.
And you show no real details on the... In the parking lot. Haven't really told us about how it's lit or, you know, anything like that, considering it's in the residential area. So, if you could give, you know, information on that, that would be helpful.
We will.
You're right. You also haven't provided any information as to the hours of operation for the parking lot.
We'll give you the specific-
To the effect?
We'll give you the specific hours.
And also, just a question. Why are you removing the trees in the back? It doesn't seem like any of your development is in the area where the trees are, because the trees are on the sidewalk.
Which tree? You're speaking to on which portion?
If you look at the plot plan, it says existing trees to be removed. I see one of them may be where the gate is in the curb cut, but the other ones-
Yeah, that was the reasoning as to why they were moved, but there might be a rationale as to that there has to be a separation, a certain distance separation between the trees, which may have caused the reason for the other ones to be moved. But the reason the architect, when I spoke to him, he said it was because of the curb cuts. We'll give you more specific information, though, as to why they were... All the trees are being moved.
And also, it's not clear to me exactly what the boundaries are of this lot, because it looks as if in one of your submissions that the lot goes to Avenue V. Is that V? Yes, Avenue V. And it's not clear what's actually going to be on Avenue V. Is it a part of this project? Is it vacant? Will it remain vacant? And if so, why can't it handle some parking?
You're talking about the corner... You're talking about that little... The corner piece at the corner of Avenue V and Coney Island?
It's a... Well, it's not just one little corner. I guess it goes the entire depth of the lot.
I'll find out for you. I see what you're talking about. We'll find out.
And could you give us some photographs of the rear?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Thank you. I think that just about does it. How long do you think it will take you to get us that information?
If we could... It's a little... We need a little bit of time. If we could submit, maybe towards the latter part of October?
The first part of October?
The latter part of October.
The latter part of October. So, submitting around the 21st of October? Or the 28th of October? And that would bring you back in November on the 18th?
Thank you. October... We'll submit on October 21st. Thank you.
Item number 43, 4814BZ, 174 Falmouth Street, Brooklyn.
Hi, Eric Polatnick. We just passed up whatever information we could find since your review session relating to the pool. I guess I know the board had question... A question about the proposed swimming pool, and...
As well as other questions?
As well as... As well as other questions. The questions that I saw were four specific questions. One relating to the easement and whether we included the easement in the floor area calculations. There's a four-foot easement at the rear of the property, and the answer is no. The zoning calculations are based only upon the 6,000-square-foot lot size, and that's how you get to the floor area ratio of 1.03 is by dividing... Dividing the 6,183 square feet of proposed floor area by the 6,000-square-foot lot size absent easement.
Then you'll have to make that clear on your drawings and in your papers. I think the drawings show the entire 104 feet, and it sort of indicates that you've got title to that four feet?
We do have title to that. We do hold title. What we're saying, and I saw this wasn't clear maybe in our papers, what we're saying is that we're not basing our floor area ratio on the easement space. And that's how we're coming to our...
So, in any case, yeah, in your papers, show that it's an easement. Show that the boundaries of your lot are four foot less than your easement? And so that it's clear exactly, you know, what you're basing your-
I understand. I saw, and I went through it after your comments, and you focused on it, and I went into our papers. I saw that-
It was confusing.
Why you could be confused. The second question the board had reflects to the balconies. I think there was a question whether or not the balconies should count as floor area, and we've spoken to our architect. The balcony is not enclosed, so there's no reason why it would be counted as floor area unless the board thought there might be a reason why it should be.
Well, the second-floor balcony, the front especially, is... It just has these rounded arches. There's a solid wall. It's roofed. It's significantly enclosed.
Well... But it's not enclosed on all four sides?
Well, it's over 50% enclosed.
Is it... Oh, that's what you're concerned... Okay, so-
That's all you need, yeah.
Yeah, no, no. I realize that. So, we'll amend the plan so that we reduce the enclosure?
There is no landscaping on the plans, and you require 50%.
Yes. We spoke to the architect yesterday. He'll be showing landscaping on the next submission.
And the lower floor should note that you're going to comply with Appendix G of the Building Code? And you're filling in anything below grade in the existing cellar, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, getting back to my pool issue.
The pool. It's a saltwater pool.
It's a saltwater pool. Okay.
That was a flood joke. The pool, we believe that the pool is lawful and allowed to be there. We've submitted to you now, from the American Society of Civil Engineers, what they advise for pools and flood zones, but we have not opined... We've gotten an opinion directly from the Department of Buildings.
I think perhaps it would be more helpful to us to go to the Building Code or go to the... Specifically, the, you know, the flood regulations and see if there's anything that talks about a pool. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, looking or approving something that is going to become a hazard.
Let me ask you this, though.
In essence, the building department should-
I was about to say, would it be just make life easier for everybody if we just deleted the pool from the plan set that's before the board and leave a note that says, "Proposed pool subject to approval by Department of Buildings"?
I would be more comfortable with that.
I'd be more comfortable, too.
Absolutely.
So, that's what we'll do.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Judy Barron, 157 Exeter Street. I'm a homeowner whose property is in the zone affected by this application. I'm also the president of the Manhattan Beach Community Group, a 73-year-old homeowners' association. Our community is surrounded by water, was devastated by Sandy, and has been designated by FEMA as a flood zone. Everyone in our community was hurt by this storm. Many of us are still fixing our homes, some wondering how they will pay for the repairs, and everyone watching as our green neighborhood has become brown. We're sickened watching our neighbors remove more dead trees and shrubs from their property while New York City continues to cut down hundreds of dying and dead 50-to-6-year-old... 70-year-old trees that were doomed by Sandy's saltwater. Shortly after Sandy, then Mayor Bloomberg issued an executive order dealing with the emergency. The order followed the increasing... I'm sorry. The order allowed for increasing building height so water could flow through the building. And most important for this discussion today, he said that no home could be altered beyond its footprint as of the day that Sandy hit the city. Since that time, a new Resiliency Text Amendment was passed with the intent to allow communities devastated by Sandy to be able to rebuild in a manner consistent with FEMA regulations and with those conditions that would prevent as much flood damage as possible. Historically speaking, we know that the BSA has in almost every case in Manhattan Beach approved the request for special permits, and in so doing, has granted almost doubly allowed FAR, in this case, more than doubly FAR, expanded building footprints resulting in diminution of open space and concreting over more and more land, making the community even more vulnerable to the flooding waters and flooding disasters. In the... If the intent of this new law was to prevent future flooding, we believe the planners omitted inclusion in the law this very small portion of the city, like Manhattan Beach, that allow for a special permit and that also happened to be in the flood zone. Where is the water supposed to go? Isn't removing trees and shrubs and grass while concreting over properties a contradiction to the intent of this new law? Considering the fact that a special permit can only be granted for an alteration of a pre-existing building and portions of the original foundation, floors and walls must be retained, there is no discussion in the new law regarding how this is even possible when raising the building's floors. Further, nowhere does the law discuss the other parameters or the use of the special permit as it relates to the most vulnerable flood zones.